I do believe we have more legislation for second reading this evening. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance seventeen dash thirteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It has been properly moved. The clerk reads ordinance seventeen dash thirteen by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Pete Munt Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance seventeen thirteen, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, making the same a part of the city of Bloomington, North Island Bloomington annexation. The synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the North Island Bloomington annexation area, which is depicted in Exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for municipal annexation that describes a proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory that was initially adopted by Resolution seventeen twenty and amended by Resolution twenty one thirteen. The approval of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration at a common council session on September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. Note on amendments which have been incorporated into ordinance seventeen thirteen. At the May nineteenth, twenty twenty one regular session, the council adopted Amendment one to ordinance seventeen thirteen, which changed various state references, signature lines to bring the post-ordinance forward to twenty twenty one so that it can be properly considered by the common council.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Move that ordinance seventeen dash thirteen be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. That ordinance seventeen dash thirteen be adopted. Seeing no city staff present, we will now move to council for any questions on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none, we will now go to public comment on ordinance seventeen dash thirteen. That's Area Three, North Island Bloomington Annexation. I would remind the public to indicate your intent to speak by using the raised hand function on Zoom. You can reach us or get there through the participants button or the reactions button and/or the more button. If you're on a mobile device, you can reach us by star, by using star nine, or you can send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. I would ask the public to please identify yourself before speaking, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Lucas, who do we have?
First is Margaret Clemens.
Well, thank you for hearing me yet again today, and my name's been invoked many times as in my role as president of the Plan Commission, and some of the decisions that I played a role in effectuating have have been called into question. And so even though I-
Ms. Clemens, I'm sorry, and I'll make sure you get your full time. And I realize your name has been invoked, but for the record, can you share or identify yourself?
I think I just did. My name is Margaret Clemens.
Okay.
I'm president of the Plan Commission. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, I didn't hear that. You have your full three minutes. You're welcome.
Okay, so anyway, my name has been invoked many times, and some of the decisions that I've made have been called into question about paired patio homes on a certain piece of land that has twenty complex sinkholes on it and homeowners association responsibility for drainage and a growing list of infrastructure maintenance requirements amidst a community where homeowners owner association failure is a problem. So I would just like to say that you're making the case that city council does not understand county planning and that it's a further argument for the reason why you should not be stewards of the county. We have ecological considerations. We have drainage issues. We have preservation of our scarce water resources that, and we have sinkholes, and you guys just in your comments have just shown such disrespect for we in the county. Here in the county, we're respectfully appealing to you with valid reasons and rationale based on our representation of our constituents as far as why they don't want to be annexed. For you to call into question our deliberations, our considerations, our consultations with experts without having been present or having considered these issues is really kind of alarming, especially when your only clarion call or cry is for density. Councilmember Steve Wolin talks about cities and towns and history and all of that. Well, I'd like to talk about the history of Bloomington. There are other histories, you know, not just selective histories about the growing densification of cities that that need to grow for economic development purposes or for some other notion this of which the city has yet to make clear. There are also examples all over the country and all over the world where cities have opposed and resisted the densification and urbanization that you're and the annexation that you are trying to promulgate and to promote with us. So I just urge you to learn a little bit more about Bloomington, learn a little bit more about our community's history, and be a little bit more respectful of the people and the ecological constraints. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Clemens, and I apologize for missing hearing you identify yourself at the beginning. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Rita Barrow.
Are you there, Ms. Barrow? Yes. I'm sorry. It's getting late.
Yeah.
My name is Rita Barrow, and I just wanted to thank Susan Sandberg, Dave Rollo, and Ron Smith for their considerations by opposing the annexation. I believe that they are taking into consideration not only the police, but the consideration of the residents of the area in the county area, rural area. So I would like to put hats off to them. You, the other council members, I would say to you, I am sorry that you really have not had the time or the, I guess, mostly just time to go out to speak to other individuals that are being annexed, especially those that are going to be in hardship. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your comments that you have made. Believe me, there are more listening than what you can imagine, and I hope, I hope this is a lesson for both of us going forward on this. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Barrow. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Julie Thomas.
Thanks for hearing me again. Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. I'm not going to repeat myself, but I do want to say a few things. First of all, when the amendment was offered last week, you had heard from county residents that totally need to hear from all county residents, and I really wish, although yes, you can try to forcibly annex, I really wish that you would precedently, just because the law allows you can do something, doesn't mean it's the most expedient thing to do. Please listen to these county residents. It's, they're not happy, and there are a lot of folks who are not able to access Zoom and aren't going to be up past nine o'clock at night either. Who are going to be in bed and are very worried and very anxious and angry. I do also want to thank the council members who have been so thoughtful in this process, and and it appears that you all have given this some thought, but especially Dave and Susan and Ron. I really, we can't thank you enough. And you know, as a, as a colleague, as a public official colleague, some of these votes we take just seem like, oh, it's not a big deal, but this is a huge deal. And this is something that's going to impact city residents, county residents, and residents who may be annexed in the future. And it's a, it's a historic vote, and I hope you can sense the gravity of it, not just with the comments that you're getting today, but understand that what you are putting in place here is is going to take generations to heal. And I just hope you keep that, keep that in mind as you work. So please reconsider and please vote no. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Thomas. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Colby Wicker.
Hello, this is Colby Wicker again. I would like to address some of the comments that some of the council members made before I get talking about Area Three. Councilmember Flaherty mentioned that the sprawl will push people out, and you know, they love to drive into the city. That's precisely what will happen, and I do agree whenever we force people out of their homes and they're not going to be able to afford them, they'll have to move out farther, and if they choose to come to the city, they will be forced to drive, drive their cars in, and that's, that's exactly what we'll be talking about. Councilmember Wolin talked about some people on fixed income within the city and how they would feel about the annexation and the arguments made by people on fixed income not going to be able to afford their rent or other bills that they may have, and I think that those people would have the empathy if they were on fixed income themselves to understand that that this is hard, and I don't think that they would want to force that onto anybody. And that's precisely what will happen, that the city going out and annexing is forcing these people into financial hardship, and I don't think that those city residents would want to force that upon anybody, especially if they're in that situation. Councilmember Scambalory mentioned that they, that we need to push forward through, through COVID. And I want to let all of you guys know that me and my organization are going door to door, talking with people, hosting meetings. And you all don't think it's safe enough to hold a public meeting right now, and we're holding all of them over Zoom, but how are we supposed to stage a resistance in a fair way? If if we have to be in person, we have to go door to door to get signatures. We have to hold events like this. And it's, and we have to put ourselves and our, and our community members at risk by doing so, and that's because of the state of the pandemic and the timing in which you guys are pursuing this. And, and I would ask you to vote no and push this to a later date if you believe that these are the boundaries that you want to have to give us a fair shot. I want to let you know that we're going to do our best to go out and get a signature from every single person who wants to vote no on this. But you are making it much harder for us, but we will persist through, and we will do our absolute best to ensure that everybody's voice gets heard, and I presume that's what all of you guys want. With the last thirty seconds I have, I would like to talk about Area Three. As my friend Susan Brackney always says, we know that it looks a little strange to have islands within, within the city, but if you talk to those people and you go and you look, look at those areas, it, it begins to make a little bit more sense. Many of the people in Area Three are renters, and, and while their taxes do not go up directly, they do go up. Their, their bills will go up due to their being renters. So I ask, did you consider that, please?
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Lee Jones.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I am County Commissioner Lee Jones, and I'm going to speak on a rather different subject. You've been hearing a whole lot about remonstration and how that is a way that people in the county can actually have some determination on what's going to happen to them. There has been some information coming out about remonstration and how it can happen that isn't necessarily correct. Remonstration is actually the one place where the county has some involvement in this whole process in that it is the county auditor who receives all the remonstrances. The county auditor will provide instructions on how to remonstrate. She has not yet done this, so any information that's being given out about how to remonstrate right now should not be taken too seriously. Make sure that people actually get the auditor's instructions on how to remonstrate, or their remonstration may not count. And I think this is something that is rather important for people to understand. Admittedly, the county is helpless in this whole process other than the fact that it will be the auditor who will handle the remonstrances. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Jones. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Give it just another second or so. Okay, seeing none, we'll now return to council members for final comments on ordinance seventeen dash thirteen, Area Three, North Island Bloomington Annexation. Any comments? Seeing none, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wolin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Clemens acts as though people in this, the people who run the city don't have experts, as though the city doesn't have sinkholes, as though the city hasn't zoned certain land to be less developable than other land, as though the city doesn't take the environment seriously, as though any dense place is inherently less worthy than a so-called rural place, as though the city is incapable of making any decisions. She and Mr. Wicker questioned the very merit of cities. It is a kind of nihilism. The nine members of council hold these jobs because if nothing, if nothing else, we believe in the inherent merit of this city, regardless of our opinion on this ordinance or any ordinances. Yet Ms. Clemens then asks us to, quote, "learn a little bit more about Bloomington," unquote, which, by the way, is a city. I do wish we had proceeded differently, as Ms. Thomas said. I wish we had not stopped annexing in two thousand and four. Yes, these decisions are going to affect city residents and non-city residents alike, but we will all continue to be residents of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolin. Do we have any other final comments from council members on ordinance seventeen thirteen? Okay, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was always my intention from the very beginning, when the whole proposal was dropped, not only on us as a council, but on the county colleagues who represent the, the outer limits, if you will. It was always my intention to vote for the islands because that, just from a geographic standpoint, made sense to me. But because of my grave disappointment in how this entire matter has been facilitated and disrupted and managed without, in my humble opinion, the proper buy-in from the individuals who these decisions are going to most, most definitely impact, I'm finding myself having to vote no on all of these parcels. Now, I've always said that annexation is a legal process. I have the utmost respect for our attorneys who have fought this good fight. It is their job to interpret the law. The law is complex. It is, it has strict rules involved with it, and I mean no disrespect to our attorneys, our controller, the, the consultants who are annexation experts. My disappointment is how the whole thing was managed, how it was communicated, and how little regard we gave to our county colleagues throughout this process from the, from the very beginning to the point that it was resumed. And so out of my concern about that and the need to be more collaborative in doing anything of this nature that does impact people in many ways that we all understand, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, just a brief comment. I believe my colleague Councilmember Sandberg brings up an important point, which is actually the first, very first question I raised when Mayor Hamilton called me some months ago and mentioned that we would be considering the annexation topic. I asked if he had spoken with county elected officials and, and how they were feeling about it. And I believe he had spoken with all or close to all of them before any decision had been made. There might have been one or two who were unwilling to speak to him. So just to note that there was outreach. Communication's a two-way street. And again, I, I understand that our commissioners, some more than others perhaps, are very strongly and publicly opposed to any annexation of any kind, regardless of past agreements and contracts signed. But that has not been my finding in talking to most of our county council colleagues, so that too is not a monolith, and I'm sure there's diversity of opinion among them, of course, as well. But it's, it's complicated, so I just want to make sure that, and you know, blame to share all around, among all of us too, I'm sure, but, but I just didn't want to let the moment pass by without sharing some of those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Do we have any other final comments from council members on ordinance seventeen thirteen? Okay, seeing none. Are we ready for the question? Okay, will the clerk please call a roll on ordinance seventeen thirteen, Area Three, North Island Bloomington Annexation?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Munt Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordinance seventeen dash thirteen is adopted six, three, zero. I do believe we have more legislation ready for second reading tonight.
Mr. Mr. President, may, may I ask the parliamentarian a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Flaherty, is, how do you interpret or the debating in Robert's Rules of Orders? We should not be addressing personalities or addressing people's motives.
I-
I just worry, I worry about that. I want to be friends with everybody and, and be kind to everybody and to our public. So how do you recommend we do that?
I'm happy to answer if it, if it pleases President Sims.
And did you say you did have an answer?
I said I'm happy to if it's okay with you. Sure.
Yes, I would just add one word, civility, and then I will shut up and let you proceed. Thank you.
A good question, Councilmember Smith. I think I kind of spoke to this a little bit last week in the context of the integrity of council members being invoked by a member of the public, and I think it's sometimes a fine line to keep in our minds about debate over ideas and actions versus debate about people's character and motives. So certainly, questioning someone's motives in, say, bringing an ordinance for consideration by the council is out of order, and that can be called out by any, any member of this council, and you could request of the president, say, to cease that member, cease that member of the public's speaking if we're attacking a motive or attacking the character of the member. But at the same time, we should be able to have a robust discussion and debate of ideas and actions. So, so that would be my advice is in discussing the merits of various proposals and the values behind them, that we speak to the merit of the ideas themselves and their values. A quick note too about personalities that we, and to this, the point of civility that Mr. Sims raised, that's one reason we generally try to keep to some level of formality and titles. If we wanted to be especially formal, we would no longer, I wouldn't be addressing you at all right now. I would be addressing the chair alone and speaking of you as, as the council member from District Two. I'm sorry, District Three. But, you know, normally we don't go quite to that length. I'll also note that, I guess my personal take is that when we've had members of the public who are themselves elected officials or public fish, public figures serving in a, in a appointed capacity like that, who are addressing ideas, that it's probably not out of order to, to speak to those ideas directly. But that's, that's my take. Ultimately, if you or anyone else feels that a comment is out of order, you could, you could request of the chair to state that and cease the comment from going on.
Thank you. I, I asked it just so that we would be mindful of that decorum and speaking to the, the, the issues and not to, you know, people's personalities or motives. So thank you. That was like prevent defense for me because sometimes I worry we get over the line. So thank you.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the answer, Councilmember and Parliamentarian Matt Flaherty. What I will say is that I am trying to listen intently. Much of what we're hearing is rebuttals to something that someone else brought up in the first place. So I don't think it's proper for someone to get upset when they're rebuttling something that someone else brought up in the first place. However, I will not stand for any of our colleagues or vice versa, us with the public, to attack a person's character or their motives, as Councilmember Flaherty said. And I think that's just being humane. Don't have a lot to do with Robert's Rules or anything else. Just like treating each other, just treat each other like people and respect each other and we'll move forward. Okay, thank you very much for that. I still believe we have more legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that ordinance seventeen dash fourteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved. The second that the clerk introduce and read by, by title and synopsis only. Ordinance seventeen dash fourteen, Area Four, which is the Central Island Bloomington Annexation. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Munt Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance seventeen fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington, Central Island Bloomington Annexation. Synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the Central Island Bloomington area, which is depicted in Exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal- the city prepared a written fiscal plan for municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory and was initially adopted via Resolution seventeen twenty-one and amended via Resolution twenty-one fourteen. Approval of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration in a common council session on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. Note on amendments, which have been incorporated into ordinance seventeen fourteen. At the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one regular session, the council adopted Amendment One to Ordinance seventeen fourteen, which changed various state references and signature lines to bring the proposed ordinance forward to twenty twenty-one so that it could be properly considered by the common council.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
I move that ordinance seventeen dash fourteen be adopted.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly, or seventeen dash fourteen be adopted and seeing no one ready to preside from the city administration, we'll move to city council questions, if any. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I was wondering if the administration could remind us, please, at what point, if an area is annexed, at what time would the residents have to pay the increased property taxes?
Steve Unger, outside Annexation Council for the city. The annexation would be, assuming no remonstrance or an insufficient remonstrance would be effective as of January one, twenty twenty-four, which means they would hit the twenty twenty-four assessment date, which, which in effect means that the first time they would be collected in property taxes would be the spring and fall assessments in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. So in May and November of twenty twenty-five would be the first times they would have to pay the additional taxes. Okay. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do we have any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to public comments on Area Seven, I'm sorry, ordinance seventeen dash fourteen, which is Area Four, and the Central Island, Bloomington Annexation. I would ask that you use the raise hand function in Zoom if you care to publicly speak. You could reach us through the participants button, through the reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're on a mobile device, you could reach us by using star nine, or you could send a note to our meeting post via the chat function on Zoom. I will remind you again, if there's any takers, to please identify yourself and you will have three minutes. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Yes, first up is Felicity.
Actually, my name is Adam Niasse. I'm on my wife's phone.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Adam Niasse. I'm in District Four. I'm definitely, you know, a little upset and I, and I understand, you know, the council is all working towards making things for the better, but it seems to be that the public comment that you guys are hearing is not really swaying any votes. You know, I, I can only speak for my own personal experience, my personal concern. I am a, a new father. Both me and my wife are essential workers in Bloomington, working at the hospital and working for a nonprofit. And, you know, the future of our family, you know, I think is dependent on some of the financial burdens that we may accept here, may have to accept here. You know, my concerns are tied into the construction, the, the tie-in for sewer, the increase in, in all of these services. And I've heard something, some people say, well, we might already be receiving these services. And I don't think that's very fair. You know, we, as far as I know, we pay for many of the services to independent contractors. We're not paying to the city. There are times where we may call for help, but we are issued the city services. For instance, if we do call for police assistance, we are getting the cities. And that is great. However, it is not something that we've asked for. So saying some things like we are already benefiting from the cities, it's, that's just how dispatch works. That's just what we're getting. So, and, and as a, as a ex firefighter, you know, I, I struggle to, I, I guess just see where some of the, the issues are that, that have to come with, with this annexation. I've struggled to, to see a lot of the benefits that are going to come from this. You know, obviously property taxes, you know, are, are a big concern. So overall, I guess in summation, you know, I'm not sure that the public comments in, in these hearings are, are necessarily going to sway anyone, but I, I hope that, that they do, I suppose. That is all.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jacqueline Porter.
My name is Jacqueline Porter. I've spoken to you before. And I can see the timer this time, so yay.
Thank you.
The writing, I feel like the writing's on the wall. With votes of six to three and with your overarching comments over the past several weeks noted, all of these areas that provoke tonight are, are going to be annexed, despite concerns raised by the head of the FOP, the county commissioners, township trustees, and many members of the public, and despite more than one area pointing out that they have enough petitions to show intent of remonstrance after the vote. Now, I recognize the city council members likely ran for office with very good intentions. You obviously spend a lot of time helping to govern the city of Bloomington. And when you hear public comments expressing frustration, I ask that you remember that this county and this area has long struggled with a town versus town divide, as it was demonstrated in the nineteen seventy-eight movie Breaking Away. And in this case, the town was more the working class people who lived in the county or on the fringes of town. So President Sims, this is possibly why there are issues between city and county government. The longtime residents of this area have had their wishes overrun many, many times in the past. So when you hear our comments, remember the history of our area and hopefully understand our frustration. Now, with this intended annexation, the houses in Shady Acres, the manufactured housing neighborhood in which I live in Area Four, will face a double tax increase, both property taxes on our house and also increased indirect taxes from the property taxes, the ten and a half thousand dollar yearly increase in property taxes our landlords Roger and Judy stags will gain. And my neighbors are more than seventy-five percent elderly, widows and widowers, disabled veterans, and many, many people on fixed incomes who cannot afford these increased taxes. And although some future city dwellers can petition to renegotiate mortgages to cover these expenses, my neighbors cannot. And I worry about my neighbor with a withered arm who's lived here more than twenty years and all the other elderly and disabled ones like him and my neighbor, who will no longer be able to afford to live here. And I don't know where they'll go. And I have signed, a large number of signed petitions from my neighbors opposing this annexation, expressing their fear that this annexation will force them out of their homes. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was quoted as saying, "The time is always right to do its right." And I ask you to consider again that what is right at this time, in the middle of a pandemic and an economic downturn with inflation and prices rising, when people are struggling, this is, it's not the right time to annex Area Four or of these other areas. This annexation is going to hurt all people in Monroe County, city and county residents alike. When county services like MCCSC schools, the public library, RBD schools, and our local fire protection districts lose money and have to try to provide services with a much smaller budget, I urge some of you to reconsider and please hear us and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Susan Brackney.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I sure can.
Thank you. My name is Susan Brackney. I've lived in parts of the city proper and parts of the county since nineteen ninety. If city officials had worked to grandfather in pre-annexation tax rates for our most vulnerable residents, I would not nearly be as concerned about the annexation of Area Four as I am. If city officials had worked more diligently to ensure that annexes will not be shut out of the related election of city mayor and city council, I would not be nearly as concerned about the annexation of this area and the other areas. And if they had mentioned and planned for the climate crisis as often as they mentioned the need for growth and economic development, I would not be nearly as concerned about the annexation of Area Four. I really, I really just want to say again that our area is unique in that we do have large lots. I suppose that, that for some of you, that might mean low-density occupancy, which is therefore sprawl. I would hope though, that instead you could see it the way I do. It's green space and mature trees, which are doing economic heavy lifting for the city. They're doing it quietly, but they are slowing, reducing, and filtering runoff to the area watershed. They are counteracting all the environmental impacts of the rapid surrounding development that's been going on. And it, it is an area that has a unique combination of historic homes, sensitive karst, natural springs. It's different than the other spots. Yes, it looks like an island. Yes, it's surrounded by developed areas. So logically, I suppose it looks like it belongs. If I felt like the city would really protect this area, save it because it is doing work, I wouldn't be so worried. But for those reasons, that's why I've been such a pain in your, in your, you know, where. That's why. I'm not usually like this. I normally wouldn't be such a pain, but while it's like the Martin Luther King thing, I mean, this is just the right thing. I had to speak up. I've had to do the work. It's just the right thing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Brackney. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Lisa P.
It's Pay.
Apologies.
No worries. It happens all the time.
Hello, Ms. Pay. You have, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Lisa Pay here. I have lived in Area Four, our dream world, tucked in amongst all the city buildings for thirty-plus years now. Growth is great. Hooray. You know, those of us have been in town all these years, kind of like it, not super developed. And again, as my neighbor up at the end of the road was saying, doesn't appear that these comments are doing much good, but I also couldn't rest well ever if I didn't mention that I just don't think we're what you need. We're small homes, we're poor. Yes, we're not crammed on top of each other, but we and our cows like it that way. So if you could care, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Pay. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jamie Ford.
Hello again, this is Jamie Ford. Just to, I guess, kind of respond to some of the other, you know, discussion on these ordinances. Yeah, it's, it's frustrating, really. I, I mean, I, I get that, you know, Councilmember Scambalory was saying that, you know, it, we keep repeating that it feels like we're not being heard. It, it's frustrating because so many people have the same concerns and yet it, it definitely does seem, I mean, the fact that people keep bringing the same concerns to you. I mean, I, I would feel that that should say something, that, you know, people feel that these aren't being addressed, that the city has not proven that, you know, yes, it can provide police protection or, you know, so on and so forth. And, and I would also ask, you know, the, the council, if you really feel, you know, I understand that you want to, you know, growth and progress and yay, all that kind of stuff. But if so many of these council members with, you know, this meeting, the last one, people were debating the philosophical ramifications behind everything. You know, several, several of the council members have, have expressed that they, they don't like the way that this has proceeded, that they wish things had, had gone differently. And yet, every ordinance is passed. If you don't like it, you guys have the ability to stop this. You know, if, if this was, hey, let's stop this one, maybe revisit it in a year, regroup, you know, actually work with the, the council or the, the community commissioners, county commissioners. I'm sorry, it's late. You know, I, I mean, for as many times as I've heard this very council and not just from, you know, Councilmember Sandberg, Smith, and Rollo, they've been consistently, you know, voting no on everything. That's, that's everybody else. Everybody else keeps saying, yeah, this, it would've been great if we'd worked together. Yeah, it would've been great if we had more outreach. Yeah, it would've been great. But hey, we're going to vote for it anyway. That, that's very frustrating. You know, you guys have the power to, to, you know, stop this annexation right now, and yet everything's going, yeah, I, I mean, so really, like, if, if you really truly are listening, then how do you defend the fact that this is completely, every ordinance is passed, despite the fact that even this, this very council has said that they wish that this had gone differently? See, I just, I don't know, maybe something to keep in mind for the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Ford. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next is Rita Barrow.
My name is Rita Barrow. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. You guys have heard all the comments from different areas. Is anyone really listening to this? Or do you feel that you, if you listen to this or maybe vote against this, that your integrity is in jeopardy? Because it's not. You know, if you're going to pull individuals into this, do it with a little bit of empathy. I, I don't want to cause any friction that has already been brought. I just believe that everybody should sit back and think about what these people are saying. I'm hoping that none of you ever get into that situation. I hope that you always have on your side what you think should be on your side. And that's what these individuals are thinking. Again, I, I feel this is not being reached to you to really understand the impact of what could occur. So again, I appreciate the job that you have, but you also have to remember, I, I represent people too in my areas. And I'm speaking for them and all flights for them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Trustee Barrow. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jamie Shaw.
So thanks for taking, letting me speak this evening. I have a few things to say. I grew up in the county.
I'm sorry if you don't mind. Can you identify yourself? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, I'm Jamie Shaw, I believe I was called. Yeah.
Thank you.
I grew up in the county, up near Morgue, Monroe State Forest. And also, kind of as a Bloomingtonian, have lived both rural and in the city for a number of years. I'm going to follow up some on what was said before, that not only do, does this area provide green space, and I am also concerned for the people who live there in the trailer homes, because I actually spent some years growing up in a trailer home and I know what that type of situation is like. But this area Um, but this area, it being considered rural, is farmland. So if we're looking at climate change and wanting to eat closer to home, why would we be more willing to have foods trucked in from quote, local farmers who are an hour to an hour and a half away, rather than some that could be located within our city limits? We could have dairy cows. I know I've seen horses there in the past. We can have a number of things that we can't have because of zoning. Um, so if you're looking at environment, um, and food security, this does not make sense. The only way that this somewhat makes sense to me for annexation, um, in regards to also, uh, less public safety, we're having officers leaving, um, is that it has to do with population size, that we're wanting increased density. There seems to be a lot of talk on that, but also, I, I hope I'm wrong on this, but I can't particularly say that possibly I am, but is there an aggression to, um, those who do not vote blue? I think all of our representatives should represent all of the different opinions, and I could see that this could be considered an aggression on those from the other party. And I really don't like that in my city. Um, these are some things to think about, some things on my mind, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, and you're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Margaret Clemmons.
Hello, my name is Margaret Clemmons and I'm, uh, uh, work with Colby Wicker and Julie Thomas and Rita Barrow and many other good people in County Residents Against Annexation. I just want to say that that's a bipartisan effort, that we are both Republican and Democrat working together to overturn this, what we see to be an ill-informed, uh, decision. And, and I would also call it aggression to annex involuntarily, uh, areas outside of the city, despite the residents overwhelming, uh, concern, express concern. But I, more importantly, I'd like to just say, uh, what a wonderful job Susan Brackney did in the Let Us Be signs that are, you see all over, uh, the county, and, uh, please don't be discouraged. Annexation Area Four, Annexation Area Three, Annexation Area One, A, B, C, two, five, six, five and, uh, seven, if seven is still in it by the end of the night. But, uh, we would like you to know that we are going to help you through the remonstration period, and that Annexation Area Four has more than seventy-one percent of the residents that annexed, uh, to annexation, and they intend to remonstrate. And I am so happy and so proud of the expressed will of the people in Annexation Area Four. You've done a wonderful job, and we're gonna get it done quickly. As soon as the remonstration period begins, we're gonna get it done quickly so that you can have a nice holiday, and so that you can relax, that you can live without this anxiety. You have the numbers, and we're gonna defeat this annexation. So, uh, please just rest a little bit better tonight, even though tonight you may not be listened to, and even though tonight the vote may not be as you may want. In the end, your remonstration is the vote, and we're gonna help you through that, and we're gonna stick by you until we, uh, till this matter is settled. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Julie Thomas.
Hello, everyone. Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. I will not repeat anything I've said before. Uh, I agree with Ms. Clemmons that our county residents, whether they live in the city or not, deserve to be thanked for their efforts and their hard work, and we know there's more to come, but, uh, we'll do it. We'll get it together and we'll do it. Uh, but I wanna thank them for, for being at this meeting and for speaking their minds and for working, uh, together. Uh, it's really unified county residents in, in an interesting way. Um, it is, it is too bad that city administration's not present, um, today, and I, and I did not notice that until somebody had mentioned that. Um, I wanted to address a couple of quick things that have arisen just for clarification. Uh, indeed, there was for a time a two-mile fringe around the ci- around the city, uh, into county zoning. And then there was an area intended for annexation or an AFA. That expired. Uh, the commissioners and the Cruzan administration, neither of us signed on to continue that agreement. There is no such agreement at this time. I also want to point out that as much as people may look at the map and think, well, those islands should just be part of the city. Um, in Area Three, I know I'm going backwards a little bit here, in Area Three, there are only three valid waivers. In Area Four, there are only four valid waivers. In Area Five, there are thirteen. None of these will be sufficient to stop a remonstration process. So, um, I hope you, um, get that and understand that if you move forward, and again, I encourage you to vote no, and I appreciate the work of those who, who are voting no. I know it, it's, uh, political courage is sometimes hard to find, but I've seen it and I'm inspired by it, and thank you for that.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Colby Wicker.
Hello again, everyone. Um, I would like to, uh, echo some of, uh, uh, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Clemmons' comments. Um, I, I do believe that, um, uh, that, that everyone who has spoken up so far, everyone who has gotten involved so far, even if we disagree with them on, on this annexation issue, should be commended. Um, because I, I think that all, all of you would agree that it's a common trend in local government um, for people to get upset after a decision is made, after it's too late and they don't get involved beforehand. Um, and, and that's, that's some of the work that, that me and my organization has tried to do this time around, is to get people involved before the decision is made, before it's too late. I, and I hope that you all appreciate that and, and have heard, um, s- some of these people's complaints about, about annexation in, in particular. Um, and in, in case, um, we, we didn't do the quick math, math there, uh, that, that Commissioner Thomas just provided. In Area Three, Four and Five, that's, that's twenty valid waivers across tho- those three areas. And that will be, those will be areas that we will be pursuing very heavily when it comes time for us to collect the remonstration, uh, signatures. Um, and, and, and I do believe if, if they, if the people in those areas keep up their energy, we will be able to get them out of that, and I, I think that it's a very possible that we could have a situation where the outer areas are annexed, but we still have those islands wi- within, and that, that seems a little bit strange to me. Um, and I, I, I do have to think that maybe, um, having to do this through COVID does inhibit our efforts a, a, a little bit more. Um, no one commented on it, um, when I mentioned before, and if they would like to, I know they're not obligated to. Um, do you think it's fair that, um, we're forced to go, go through those steps in a national pandemic where it, it will be a lot harder for us to go out and see people face to face, because as, as you all know, due to the state legis- uh, to the legislation here, it has to be physical signatures. We, there can be no electronic way of doing it. We can't mail them like, like we did with a ballot in November, um, and, and send that in or send them a paperwork to be signed. We're not, not allowed to do that. Um, and have them just send it in by mail to the auditor's office. Um, I, I, I think that might, might be a fair way to go about it, um, but because of the state of, of the pandemic, we won't be able to afford those options, and we'll have to go out and, and again, expose ourselves and, and expose the members of the public. Um, and, and I really wish that we wouldn't have to do that, and that is within your hands to change. I mean, with the few seconds I, I have left, um, I would like to, um, clear up with, uh, with, uh, with, with everyone, my, my stance on annexation and that, you know, cities shouldn't exist. I think that annexation can be good, but in this case, it, it's not. I think that, that, that is, has been handled very poorly, and that's why I'm against it this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wicker, for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to council. Um, and this will be for questions. If anyone has any questions on council. Seeing none, we will now go to final comments for council members. Uh, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, yeah, thank you, just a few things. Um. One, I just echo the points that Councilmember Scimblerie made earlier. Um. I know, like many issues that, that we consider in local government, this is one where there's a lot of strongly held feelings. Uh, and it's easy to feel like people aren't listening to you. Um, I, I think all of us are very much listening. Um, you'll notice that, that most of the votes have been six-three, um, because we've been listening for months and months and months, and duly considered every argument we've heard. So we've, we've thought through this critically, all of us trying to do what is right, what we think is right, uh, and what is best for this community. And I, I think we often have a tendency to conflate being listened to with being agreed with, and, and I would just caution us to avoid that, that easy sort of trap to fall into. Um. I remain open on all votes, uh, until they are cast, to cast them differently if an argument is compelling to me. That remains true. I, I, I have yet, have yet to hear an argument that, that compels me to think differently about this situation than I already have come to, to preliminary conclusions on, though. So, I just wanted to reassure folks that we are absolutely listening. All of us are. That's, that's part of our jobs. Um, and nobody on either side of this issue has, has changed their, their vote, so to speak, um, uh, since we started. Um. Regarding process, in the last comment we just heard, I'll just again invoke that I, I kind of agree, but you have to grant that we engaged in a process as a city where we exchanged sewer service in exchange for a future, um, annexation. That was the agreement. And when we talk about valid waivers, the, the presumption from the few members of the public who just commented on that is that state legislation invalidating contracts is valid. Um, it's, it's a, it's an argument that's in line with their political goal, I understand, but like, that will surely be challenged in court, and, and I doubt it. You know, that this, the state legislation will prevail, but we'll see. But the point, I guess, is that there's a process to all this. We, um, you know, absolutely folks can remonstrate, and that's the state-defined way to protest, and that's, that's all fine, but I, I, um, I feel like it's like, uh, the argument's a little facile that, that, um, that this is just a bad, a bad flawed process that we, and we are, and this is a forced annexation. It's, it doesn't give credit to the fact that this was, uh, in most, in many cases, a duly considered exchange, uh, a type of voluntary annexation just on a time lag. Um, so I just wanted to speak to those points. Second is, is, um, a, a couple of residents spoke to some climate issues and some development issues. Let me be clear that I'm not somebody who favors development or growth for the sake of growth. I just understand that we can't stop growth and that we are a desirable community, and that if we try to engage in some sort of anti-growth principle, the folks we harm are the folks who are least able to afford it. Um, I'd be happy to dig deep on these principles in my monthly constituent meetings, which are the third Monday of the month, um, at five-thirty PM. Uh, details on the council calendar. It's too much to go into in these meetings, but there's, there's really important values being brought up by folks who I happen to disagree with on these particular annexation proposals. But I think there's a lot of shared values there, and, and it's just really difficult to have a back and forth, obviously, in a meeting like this. So I would love to unpack some of these issues around, um, uh, climate issues and development issues that folks are bringing up. So, so I remain open to do that, um, and just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollo.
Well, I find myself in agreement with some of what, uh, Councilmember Flaherty said. I, I think that's, um, it's true, we're although growth may be constrained globally, at some point, we're an open system, uh, here, but we can manage it, manage growth, and we can discourage it in some areas, and we can enhance it in others, um, that provide uh, a community benefit. Um, certainly, in this case with annexation, there's a great deal of private interest in what we're doing, and, uh, there's going to be, uh, I think, a lot of uh, money to be made in terms of land speculation and so forth. Um, having city services extended to certain areas, it's going to be uh, obviously a very, very key thing for, uh, various types of development to occur, as well, you know, future zoning, uh, density, uh, increases and so forth. Um, and like Councilmember Sandberg, I found myself in a little quandary at the beginning regarding these island areas. I thought maybe there would be um, kind of a, you know, uh, something that had been overlooked and that we should, we should do it, um, almost reflexively, and then I got to kind of acquaint myself of these areas more, and I find very compelling, uh, reasons to vote against annexing Area Four, um, as stated by Susan Brackney. Um, and, um, twofold. One is that these are, this is like an island, um, that is tucked within the city that has livestock and that has, uh, the sort of opti- optimal area for urban agriculture to, to occur, and that's a, that would could be a very rare thing, um, that would be highly, highly valued by the community, uh, in the future. And so, um, perhaps we should let that alone. And then we have the consideration of so many residents that live there on fixed incomes, um, as was described by o- others. Um, and by the way, uh, Ms. Shaw also spoke to the urban, urban agriculture possibility there. Um, so that is to say that, you know, vibrant cities aren't monolithic, and they, considering these areas uh, for their current character at this time, I think is an important consideration. And I, I think that this is a, a very good reason to maintain Area Four as it is. Um, because I think that it's, it's, it's unique. It's, it has its own vibrancy. It is green space. We should be concerned about, um, biodiversity in the city, and this is an, an oasis for that. Uh, so, um, I think these are very, uh, compelling comments, and I really appreciate the, the public speaking about them, uh, this evening. So I'll be voting no on, uh, annexing Area Four. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, um, I would first like to say this is, this whole process I found very difficult, and I've wrestled with the question of annexation, uh, all summer. Um, and it gives me no joy to vote uh, in a way that is different from the majority of the public comments I've received. However, I think that there, the, the errors in the process um, lie with what has been done in the past in the city of Bloomington. And I think we need to make up for those errors now. So the, the problem is twofold. First of all, sewer service was extended to, um, areas that were developing outside city limits, uh, without them being annexed. So we should never have done that. We should say, we should have said, look, we, we will extend sewer service to you, but you must become part of the city. Um, so, so that was a mistake, and then no annexation was pursued since two thousand and four, so we have um, seventeen years in which there was development, but none of it was incorporated into the city, and that, that's all, another problem we're, we're making up for now. Um, so, yes, there are problems with, with the way, uh, things have been handled in the past, and I, I think that, um, we are also feeling some pressure because the General Assembly keeps changing the rules on us, uh, and the last time they did, it was deemed unconstitutional, and, um, therefore, we're really doing something now that we should have done four years ago. So, um, that said, uh, remonstration is part of the process. Uh, you know, if there, um, are a majority of property owners in Area Four or any of the areas um, who do not have waivers, uh, signed, that remonstrate, then then that's, that's fine. That, go ahead, then we won't be able to annex that area. Um, I tend to agree with, uh, Councilmember Flaherty and the mayor's administration that um, the recent state legislation that claimed that older waivers, um, were no longer valid i- is, is uh, illegal as well, because a contract cannot just be summarily, um, ended by the state. Um, but anyway, so we'll, we'll, those chips will fall as they may. But anyway, so we'll, we'll, those chips will fall as they may and, um, and it's, it's all part of the process. As far as, um, area four in particular and the. Kind of, um, rural feel and the, the green space in that area. It's a beautiful area. You know, if we annex it, that does not mean we're going to zone it for multifamily housing or for dense, uh, a single family or, or any of that. The zoning will be decisions that will be made later. By the new city council that will be voted into office. In two thousand and twenty-three, which may or may not include any of us. And so after the annexation takes effect, then the, um. The planning transportation department will have public hearings and will, um, propose zoning to the plan commission and that they will recommend things to the city council. And. I, you know, if I'm still around then, I, I think an agricultural zoning would be entirely appropriate for parts of area four. And, and some other parts of, um, the annexation areas. So there's nothing stopping us from creating an agricultural zone. And saying, hey, that's what we want to see here. And I think there, there is a lot of value in green space and I do not want to see, uh, you know, high density development. Throughout all these areas because we do need to preserve, uh, some wildlife corridors and, uh, the carst area for sure. But that's not what we're saying with annexation. We're not saying we're gonna pave this over. We're saying this, this is surrounded by the city of Bloomington. It should be part of the city of Bloomington, but should be part of our long range planning. The residents here should be, uh, voting for, uh, the members of their, the city government. And, um, so that I'm, I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Do we have any other council members' final comments on ordinance seventeen dash fourteen? Casey, Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I'm just to follow up on Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments that the.
Councilmember Rallo, just before you go, uh, let me double check. Do we have anyone else that would, before we start another round? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Rallo. Sorry.
Okay, just to follow up on Councilmember Piedmont Smith's, um, comments. Well, this agricultural use already exists and if we, if we annex it. Uh, it will cease to exist unless we. Change rules governing livestock in the city. And, uh, I, I think that would be quite difficult to. Specifically, uh, do so for this particular area. So it would probably be very difficult. To, uh, provide the allowances that are, that occur there now. By just changing code. I think it's, it, that's gonna be. Be very challenging. So all the more reason to, to keep it as it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Seeing none, are we ready for the quest question? And will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance seventeen dash fourteen, area four, central island Bloomington annexation?
Yes. Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. That ordinance passes six, three, zero. Um, I do believe we have more legislation ready for second reading tonight.
President, I move that ordinance seventeen dash fifteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance seventeen fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana. Annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof. And making the same a part of the city of Bloomington, South Island Bloomington annexation. The synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the South Island Bloomington annexation area. Which is depicted in exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital. And capital services to the annexation territory and was initially adopted via resolution seventeen twenty-two and amended via resolution twenty-one fifteen. The approval of, of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration at a common council session. On September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. Note on amendments which have been incorporated into ordinance seventeen fifteen. At the May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular session, the council adopted amendment oh one. To ordinance seventeen fifteen, which changed various state references, signature lines. To bring the proposed ordinance forward to two thousand and twenty-one, so that it could be properly considered by the common council.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
So I moved that ordinance seventeen dash fifteen be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Um, seeing no comment from the administration. Councilmember Flaherty.
I'm sorry if I was pretty sure of the hand raised there. Uh, just a, a brief procedural note that, um. While public comment is very much welcome on the ordinance themselves, uh, if, if members of the public would, would perhaps please refrain from. Directing comments to a particular constituency in the public and a political campaign involved in that regard. Comments should be kept to the ordinances themselves that are under consideration tonight and directed at this body. So thank you.
Not to be dense, but I'm not so sure I understand that what.
Oh, oh, all I meant was, um, um, and, and, uh. I, I don't mean this to be unduly critical. Um, I guess, uh, Ms. Clement's comments in particular, uh, last, last round, um, were sort of, uh. Rallying support for a, a political effort to oppose an annexation and, and with all respect for that campaign and, uh, their efforts in that regard. Councilmember comment, or sorry, public comment on the ordinances that we, that are under consideration are not particularly an appropriate time for. Uh, rallying that effort. Uh, so it just, it was just a request for members of the public to keep their comments, uh, targeted at the ordinances and the substance of those. And this council's consideration of them as opposed to a particular political campaign, for instance.
Okay. Thank you for that procedural clarification. Okay, um, do we have any? Uh, questions from council? On ordinance seventeen dash fifteen, area five, South Island Bloomington annexation. Seeing none, we will move to public comment. And I will. Remind everyone that you can please use the raise hand function in Zoom and you can get. Um, that function through the participants button, the reactions button, or the more button. Um, at the bottom of your screen. If you have a mobile device, you can use star nine to reach us. You could send us a note or, uh, send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Uh, again, ask you to please identify yourself and remind you that you have three minutes, um, to make your public comment. Mr. Lucas.
Yes, thank you. First is Margaret Clements.
My name is Margaret Clements and, uh, my name has been invoked a lot tonight and I think a good portion of that invocation has been out of order. And, uh, informing the public, I would advise, uh, the council is not, um. Political, uh, community action is not a com- political campaign. I'd like to set the record straight on that. And as we discuss annexation area five, I would like to inform city council. That we have more than sixty-five percent of the, uh, residents in annexation area five who've signed an intent to remonstrate. And I want the residents of area five to know that I'm there for them. That Colby Wicker is there for them, that Julie Thomas is there for them, that the city, that. Rita Barrow is there for them. We're going to be helping the residents in annexation area five collect signatures. We're going to be notarizing them. And we're going to be sure that they succeed in their effort to remonstrate. Against the city of Bloomington, against this involuntary annexation. So please rest assured, annexation area five, that we are with you, we are going to help you. And this is not a political statement. It is a bipartisan community information campaign on how we can help you achieve your goals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Clements. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Lucas, I do see one.
Yes, next is Julie Thomas.
Hello, everyone. Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. I really didn't think I was going to speak again, but, um, I wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said. This is a really interesting way to have a conversation, isn't it? Um, I appreciate what, um, Isabel Piedmont Smith said about changing rules. That is really been difficult for everybody and I, and I. Can empathize with that struggle. Um, and I appreciate that desire to keep this area and area, um. That, that area four, and I'm going backwards a little bit, but to keep it rural, that made sense, but why annex it then? What services are going to be provided? And I think that question can be addressed to area five. Um, and I really, I really appreciated the comment that the city is not monolithic. It shouldn't be. And we are not disparaging the city. We are not disparaging, uh, the city of Bloomington or anyone, uh, in it or anyone in its leadership. What we are saying is, and this is why the county commissioners did what we did. Which was an unusual step to speak out against this, is we heard from residents who are scared and anxious and angry. And we believe this process is too much, too fast, and does not allow enough time for residents to respond appropriately. Uh, we would have liked to have seen those public sessions, uh, reenacted after, uh, two thousand and seventeen. That two thousand and seventeen. Effort didn't reach residents who necessarily lived here in two thousand and twenty-one in these annexation area, targeted areas. Um, and, um, just a, um, note as well about, um, why we are. This is not about city versus county, um, is that in our comprehensive plan, we specifically said keeping rural areas rural. And urban areas urban. That means we have an understanding and a respect for what is there. But we also respect the fact that when people choose to live in the county. They should choose, they, they, their decision should be respected. If, um, and that is what I'm hearing from residents. Who are they to decide that I should live in the city? And so, yes, the remonstration process is going to come into play and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that residents are informed that if they do choose to remonstrate, they will know how to. And we'll help them in any way that we can. We're not forcing anybody to remonstrate. Uh, so thank you again, uh, for your time and I won't keep you.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Thomas. Who do we have next? Mr. Lucas?
Next is Colby Wicker.
Yes, hello again, council. This is Colby Wicker speaking. Um, I, I want to echo, um, Ms. Clement's point that public information is not political. Um, that is the goal of, of our, of our organization, County Residents Against Annexation, is to provide everyone with the adequate facts that they need. Um, to be able to push forward with a remonstration if, if they choose to. Um, we're not telling anybody to do anything. Um, we're just giving them the steps if, if they come to us and they, and they want to know how, how to do so. And when we're just asking them, going, going around saying, if you would like to remonstrate, we'll, we are here to help you do that. And we will continue to be, um, and everybody in the community should know that we're there if they want to reach out to us as well. I assume our city and county officials, if they want to add, uh, point their questions there. Um, I also, just for the record, want to ask one, once more. Um, if anybody would, would like to comment, I know you do not have to. If you think that it's fair that we, uh, have to push through this and, and during a national pandemic. Um, and. Where, where we can put the community and ourselves, the organizers at risk. For the, for the sake of, of this annexation, when it could be put off, when we are no longer in this annexation. And I know some people will say. Well, we tried this in two thousand and seventeen and, and it was shut down. I will say that that's not the people out in the county in these areas fault. That, that, that any of those things happen. And I don't think that they should be punished and, and put at a disadvantage just because of, of those actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wicker. Who do we have next? Mr. Lucas?
Next is Mark Furnish.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Furnish. How are you?
Good. My name's Dr. Mark Furnish. I live on, uh, Wymer Road, which of course is in area five. And, uh, while me and my neighbors disagree on whether it's Wymer or Weemer. Uh, we overwhelmingly agree, uh, that we don't want to be annexed. And I can say that because I myself personally went out and collected dozens and dozens of, uh, petitions against annexation. And it was a very enjoyable time. It's a wonderful thing that you know your neighbors that, uh, and people in your neighborhood. And, um, it was like old home week. They all loved to see me. They just smiled and they gave me water and gave me Pepsi and everything I wanted. And they thanked me so much that, that you're standing up because we're totally against this. So, um, the data that the, uh, county residents against annexation gave you is correct. I mean overwhelmingly, people in this area are against it. We don't care that we're an island. That's meaningless to us. Okay, we're American citizens. Our opinions matter. They matter. Okay, they matter. And they ought to matter to you. There was, democracy isn't simply procedure. Okay, democracy isn't simply procedure. Okay, it's like there's the spirit of the law and there's the letter of the law. If a law doesn't have spirit, it's no law at all. It's hollow. Well, democracy is the same way. And if majority opinion doesn't matter. Then it's not democracy. It's just simply procedure and will to power. Okay, now look, I know you guys, you, you're doing your best. You got a hard job. You got a hard job. And, and I respect your knowledge. I got a PhD. I know what, I know what it is. Okay? I got robed, okay? So it's a, you got a hard job to figure out how to handle this stuff. Okay, I respect your knowledge. I really do. But the thing is, is the people really, from their perspective, they haven't heard your knowledge, okay? Spewing stuff online is not communicating. I'm sorry, it's not. You need, you knew this was going to be opposed overwhelmingly. So your job was to go out to the people, I mean, down to the people, literally door to door like we did. And help to educate people. And you wouldn't be having this kind of, 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 of opposition, but you didn't do that. And that, what that shows people like me is that you really don't care about the spirit of democracy. You care about what's in your head and your visions and whatever. So my challenge to you in the last few seconds. Uh, you know, you're going to lose on some of these, uh, annexation issues. And so, uh, I challenge you to go out and see people. Because that's the only way you're going to convert them over is if you go door to door. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have anymore, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, yes. Believe Rita Barrow like to comment.
My name is Rita Barrow. Excuse me. I am trustee of Bimbyran Township and I am more than willing to help any of the annexed areas. We have plans, so we will take this forward. As far as contr- contracts that we signed or they signed for sewer. How many contracts last a lifetime? If you put a roof on a house, is that to last for a lifetime? Not only that, let's talk about public safety. The growth on this is going to be astronomical. And you talk about sheriffs. Do you know that your sheriff's department are the ones that distribute things like warrants, divorce papers, so forth and so on? And if the city cannot be, respond to the sheriff, to an incident, the sheriff is called by dispatch. I just, I, I think you guys don't understand that the county, you're, you're all county, you're Monroe County. We're just in a rural area. And we want to work with you, but we don't want it one-sided. I appreciate your, your positively understanding this stuff. I, I just think that you should be in a situation that we are in and hear our residents complain, angry, discouraged, the anxiety that they are experiencing. It, it really bothers me. It really, really bothers me. So I just want to thank you again.
Thank you, trustee Barrow. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jaclyn Porter.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Porter again. Sorry, I was looking at the map again to make sure I was perfectly clear. So area five is Weemer Road and also the area behind it, which is a, a rural area. It does not have necessarily very many houses. Now, it does also include, it looks like the apartments. So that would be more of a dense area. But if I travel down Weemer Road every day to go to work, you know, there are, there is a family with sheep and a llama. I'm not sure that's going to be allowed once it's annexed and put into the city. And going back to area four, my neighbor with her chickens and her roosters, those aren't going to be allowed. And so, you know, although some of the council members have said we could, you know, say these are agricultural areas, you know, others have mentioned that even as designated agricultural areas for zoning, there are still city ordinances that say no roosters. And I bet there are city ordinances that, that are a little iffy about llamas and sheep, perhaps. I wouldn't be surprised if that's not the case as well. You know, these are areas that often are, that flood. And we already have issues with flooding in the Weemer Road area frequently. We have issues off of Cory Lane that floods. And, you know, and as regardless of whether our intent or our hope is that it won't develop and more development won't go into these areas, what we, what I've seen in the last multiple years is when development goes in, you know, no matter how much we think the college kids aren't going to move out this far, they're out here. And so, you know, and, and the apartment complexes are putting in bussing so that they can get, they can take the students to campus for free, cheaper free. So the students are out here. So, you know, as these areas develop and as apartments go into these areas, apartment complexes go in, there, the students come out here too. And, and then they take up the housing that my daughters would have loved to have had, you know, the, the, the reasonable cost housing that is just not there. It's causing the ten thousand people from Spencer and Owen County to have to commute over here because they just can't afford it. My own daughters are, one's waiting for public housing and one's trying to save up money for our house and cannot afford it in this area where they grew up. And it's just sad. And, you know, one of the last few areas of public housing that's not too awfully far or, or reasonable cost housing that's not too awfully far out, or at least maybe even still in this, you know, county, as they get annexed, the taxes, the prices are going to go up and up.
I'm sorry, Ms. Porter. Your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jamie Ford.
Hello, once again, I'm Jamie Ford. I keep, and as part of these annexation ordinances, I keep hearing about, you know, the waivers about the city extending sewer services, you know, in exchange for, you know, not remonstrating against the annexation process. Is there, and I don't know, I might be out of line here in terms of like protocol, but is it possible to like see these waivers? Like, I, I keep hearing about how this is like a contract, but like, I, I mean, I even tried to like Google search it to see like what the original like wording in these documents, if they exist even say, and I couldn't even find anything on it. Other than the fact that like some random waiver apparently exists on some of these parcels and stuff like that. So I don't know, I guess if, if I can pose this question to the, the council, like is this, I guess this is part of like the transparency thing that, that makes me kind of question this thing is like, i- is it possible to like see this stuff? Is this like a matter of public record? I, I, I don't know. I keep hearing that there's a contract, but I haven't seen anything. Is that, is that possible to ask that question?
Ms. Ford, you can ask it, but we don't have back and forth on public comment. And maybe one of our colleagues can take up your question and later on. But there won't be a back and forth on this particular instance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. You still had time left, Ms. Ford. Were you complete?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was just if, I guess whoever it is that can explain it. But, you know, if it's not every day you live through an annexation, so, yeah, someone could explain that kind of thing. That'd be, that'd be great to hear about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jamie Shaw.
Hello, I'm Jamie Shaw. Made a comment earlier about agriculture in cities, so urban ag. As some of you know, I've worked in this area for a while. And there's a lot of people on the call, I don't think, who are rural who may not know all the things that go along with urban agriculture in the city. So some of them may be under that. Such as Park Ridge does not allow any kind of food growing in front yards. So if you have a cornered lot, too bad, you can't really feed your family from that. You have units. Animals are considered in units and different sizes. Basically, the only thing that could really be, you know, you have to get approval from the city to have five hens. We used to have part of that ordinance where you'd have to get permissions from all of your contiguous neighbors. Luckily, that is no longer. However, you still can only have five hens and you have to go through and in the form fill out what types of birds you have, whether they're Rhode Island bred, Cornish rock crosses or whatever. We do allow butchering, but not, not anywhere someone can see it. That is something that's very unique to Bloomington. But as far as sheep, llamas, hogs, anything else that would be considered livestock is not going to be allowed in the city. We have also weed ordinances that's going to be causing a problem. Besides all of these things that would hinder agriculture in the city, we also have, well, maybe city folks don't know that it's really difficult to earn a livelihood as a farmer. Your, if you're going to be doing any kind of agriculture, that's going to use livestock to put carbon back into the soil through manure, that's going to be a problem. So you're always going to have to bring, bringing in inputs. The financial end is, since it is difficult to be an actual farmer who is self-sustaining, it can be done. It's more difficult because we live in a four-season area. But the taxes that would be increasing this is going to be a significant burden, not only in those who are lower income, but on any kind of food production that's going to be going on near the city. So I encourage any of the rural folks, if you want to see what's going to happen in this, get into the ordinances themselves and see if you can figure that out and contact a possible council member or trustee to help you understand what that is because it's not real clear. Thanks for your time.
For your comments. Do we have any more, Mr. Lucas? As you can see.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll move back to council if there's any other questions. In this particular time, I think I'd like to start. I don't know if it's Mr. Rooker or Ms. Guthrie, but there was a question from a public commenter about waivers and access to them. Can, is there someone that could explain that process, if there is such a process with regard to transparency? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what she was asking.
Certainly, and I'm not sure precisely what her question was as well, but, but if, if there is a request to
No, I think part of it was, is there a way that a person can see waivers? Or was it part of public record or something to that effect?
Yes, so, so Michael Rooker, city attorney, just to answer that question, we have shared copies of our waivers with a number of people with local media as well as with our county colleagues to, to assist them with some of the work they have to do related to annexation. I believe that some local media have placed the waivers online in various locations. And certainly if somebody wanted to follow up with a request for public records for a particular waiver or had a question about them, we would encourage them to contact the city of Bloomington, the city of Bloomington Legal Department, and we can help them with that.
Okay, thank you very much for your response. Do we have any other questions in this round from council members? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to final comment from council on ordnet seventeen dash fifteen, area five, which is a South Island Bloomington annexation. Final comments. Final comments. I don't see anything. Yeah, yeah, it's low levity. Councilmember Voland, then councilmember Sandberg, then councilmember P. Monmouth Smith.
Levity, Mr. President.
Yes.
Briefly, I just want to say, we keep hearing people use words, and I don't know that we agree on the definition of those words. One word I've heard used is democracy. This is a representative democracy. But it's not a direct democracy. This is not democracy by referendum, which people who've opposed ordinances like this have said when they're saying that we're not listening and that people should be able to vote on it. Well, you know, the city's objection isn't to the new annexation laws per se. City's objection was to the obvious breaking of the ultimate contracts, the state constitution and the body of law that preceded the new laws that the state has passed over the past several years. The order in which they passed them and the order in which they're going to apply them. I don't think that in future annexations, we're going to have any objection to the new laws or a leg to stand on, even if we did. Those laws were duly passed. It's their retroactive application. Their, their obvious breaking of other existing laws. We're not a, we're not, this is not ruled by, we, we live in a, a state of law. It's not up to the whims of even of general assembly who passes the laws to just suspend the previous laws they passed. We even have laws to protect against that. But as far as the question, who are we to decide? We are a municipal corporation in the state of Indiana. And IC thirty-six four-two reads, "Territory may be annexed by municipality under section three or four of this chapter. However, a municipality may not annex territory that is inside the corporate boundaries of another municipality. All the municipalities may merge under IC thirty-six four-two." Okay? That's our authority. That is the authority of this city to annex. That was authority created by the state, by the general assembly, whom we all elected. I'm not sure how much clearer it gets in that. I would point out one last thing. Several people have talked about the presence of students in the city and their effect on the city as it, as it may be. But I point out that the city of Bloomington understands the concerns of annexation because the university itself acts as a de facto municipality. And by, you know, de facto annexes by taking land that it puts onto its campus off of the tax rules. So, you know, it, it works both ways for the city of Bloomington. Anyway, I thank everyone for their endurance of this long and difficult process. I do want to, as a particular note, that Commissioner Thomas said something that I wanted to, to express my appreciation for. They indeed did not disparage any elected officials in the course of their objections to our action. I for one appreciate that and I understand what a difficult job they have too. None of this has been easy and I, I just wanted to express my appreciation for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I will begin my last statement for the evening with a direct answer to Mr. Wicker's question. Yes, I do feel it is largely problematic and, and bordering on irresponsible to make major decisions. And I consider annexation one of the biggest issues I've had to grapple with in my time on this council during a pandemic. Part of an elected official's responsibility is the public safety and the health of your community. And there have been quite a few heavy lifts put on our plates, on this council's plate during a time when we're all hunkered down, when we are having to conduct meetings via Zoom and Zoom has its benefits, but it also has its drawbacks when it comes to public engagement. So that is one of several reasons why I oppose this entire process. So yes, during a pandemic, we all should be mindful. And I frankly think Monroe County has done a fairly decent job of managing the pandemic here in Monroe County and in Bloomington. I think our strong stance on respecting the science has been commendable. That said, I think the city of Bloomington needs to look to its own house. I think there are plenty of things that we could do as a council, as legislators and as fiscally responsible leaders to make sure the city of Bloomington is as good, as solid, as, as decent as we can possibly make it. So individuals who are in the surrounding areas may actually find it appealing to be a part of the city of Bloomington. Now, with respect to all the constituents outside of the territory and inside the city of Bloomington who have come here to make their opinions known, I agree with some of my colleagues that just because you come in and tell us your feelings, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to sway us in any way because we have our own moral compasses, we have our own standards by which we make decisions about how we're going to vote. And I don't listen to every single constituent who comes into a Zoom meeting and tells me what they think I should do. I listen respectfully. I try not to lecture constituents and try to tell them when they're off base or what have you. I listen respectfully, duly noted, and I make my decisions accordingly. That is what democracy is all about. I also think that some of this push to get this done now is out of a fear as to what the Indiana General Assembly might do. There's a lot of anticipation that, oh, if we don't do this now, we're never going to have another opportunity to do it again because they're just going to come around and do what they do and stop the city of Bloomington. And so, again, as many of the people we've heard from tonight plan to remonstrate, you know, we as citizens here in Bloomington have a right to be upset with some of the decisions that are made by the Indiana General Assembly that tie our hands and keep us from home rule and keep us from doing for the city of Bloomington what we all want to do as a community that has a lot of character, a lot of history. We're known for our strong social services. We are known for our arts. We are known for a lot of things. But what I hope we are not known for going forward is that we don't play well in the sandbox with others. I think this has been shameful. I think it has been wrong-headed, and that is why I have opposed every single one of these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that livestock is allowed per our Unified Development Ordinance based on how much property you have, how much land you have for that livestock to live on. So that is allowed. The, the question of whether it's fair to, to make such a decision during COVID, Mr. Wicker repeatedly, you know, asked that in the context of him and other members of the County Residents Against Annexation going door to door and informing people about their options. In that respect, I think it is fair because it is still safe to go door to door as long as you wear a mask. However, you know, keep your distance from people. I think that's still a safe thing to do. So as far as what Commissioner Thomas has said about the county seeking to keep rural areas rural and urban areas urban, that has always puzzled me somewhat, and I can certainly, you know, discuss with, with her and the commissioners offline, but it seems to me that that denies the reality of growth. Or it says that growth should only happen in areas that are already urban, therefore adding density, which we've seen a lot of pushback on here in the City of Bloomington with people not wanting high rises and not wanting, you know, fourplexes and threeplexes next door to them and things like that. So if I'm to interpret this at face value, then no, the, the growth that, that naturally happens because Bloomington is a popular place to live could not happen on the outskirts of the city, and we could only densify the core, which I don't, I don't see as a feasible plan. I'm, I've been opposed to sprawl ever since, you know, for twenty years, ever since I've been involved in city government. That's why I got involved in city government. So certainly I don't want to see sprawl happen, but the areas that are becoming, that have already been developed close to the edges of the city are areas that should become more urban. So I'm, I guess I'm just not quite understanding that, that philosophy. So in sum, I'd, I, I guess I, I feel that particularly for Area Five, Areas Three, Four, and Five, that these are areas surrounded by the City of Bloomington and that could most benefit both the residents there and the residents of the rest of Bloomington by being part of the community and so that we plan to gather our future under the same planning rules and under the same kind of vision for the future of Bloomington, of our community as a whole. It just, it makes sense to me for them to be part of the city. And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Do we have any other council final comments? Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. Just a brief follow-up on the procedural point that I made earlier. If this was a general public comment period, sharing any information would be appropriate. But when we're taking public comments specific to an ordinance, sort of rallying position and speaking to a base of, of political campaigning is, is, I, I maintain, out of order for what is being discussed. And, and notice also that I said political, small p, not partisan. I'm not saying it's a party campaign issue. I'm just saying, again, we should all strive as members of the public or council members to keep our comments constrained to issues relevant to the merits of the ordinance being discussed. So that's all, just a clarification. Thanks. And again, with no disrespect, I certainly support the, the right of Miss Collins and others to engage in the campaign they are as a matter of democratic process. I was just speaking to what's in order during public comment on a particular ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, President Sims. I'd like to thank the public, city staff, and council members for all this really great, robust discussion. It's really been great. You know, I, I oppose this ordinance and the rest of them. I, I, I think I, I, it evolved for me is that it was kind of a flawed proposition in that it was too large, was not incremental. And so that, that was kind of one of the backdrops in my mind. You know, I was troubled by the scope of it. It could have been smaller. It could have been more targeted. It could have been voluntary. And I know we, you know, I, it started before I came on to council, so. So that was different. You know, Thomas Jefferson said the authority of government is derived by the consent of the governed. And in this case, we have all these comments from the public who are going to be affected, and they overwhelmingly say they don't, they don't want annexation. And that really informs my decision on how I vote. And so that's about all I wanted to say, and I, and I do thank everyone for such a, really a great exploration of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, Councilmember Allo.
I think Councilmember Sandberg's comments really summed up a lot of my sentiments. I think this is an unfortunate time to proceed during a pandemic. I don't think there's any way to sugarcoat that. I think that that's, this is, at the beginning of the pandemic, I think there was a consensus, I thought, not to take on matters of large, such large significance that would be controversial or matters that wouldn't be, that were peripheral, that we were to do business that needed to be done by the city. And certainly, when it comes to a subject like this, controversial, requiring a lot of public input, requiring the community to be able to assemble. You know, this is suboptimal. Just hearing disembodied voices from people. Many people who probably don't have computer access, who are vulnerable populations, who are going to be affected by higher taxes. A lot has been said by this council and the administration about the vulnerability of certain populations and our need to look out for them. But I think that that really hasn't occurred in, in this process. But again, I think my, my biggest fear is that we're not up to the task. And the elephant in the room, which is almost never addressed by anyone, is of course, among our services that we will provide is public safety. I mean, there's, there's no way one can say that we're up to that task, and we won't be for some time. So the idea of concurrency, getting our own house in order, as someone said in our past meeting, before we attempt to take on a larger area in the county, seems very prudent, but it seems to have been almost forgotten. So, you know, if our public safety is already strained to the breaking point, shouldn't we fix that before proceeding? It's, it's incredible that we're not, that we, that, that it's just more or less hope, hoping that it resolves. I think that's really very, very hazardous, bordering on reckless. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allo. I believe you had a first fight in the first round, Councilmember Volan. Do we have any other final comments, first round, from council members? Okay. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, one thing that Councilmember Allo said I felt deserved response. If, if it's true what he says that we should not be making decisions of such import in a pandemic, well, Councilman Allo and others who might oppose this legislation have had an additional tool at their disposal that they have not chosen to use, and that tool has been put into relief by the governor's executive orders. As a result of our, of the orders allowing meetings to be held online, we have had an obligation to vote, to have a roll call vote, to introduce every piece of legislation we hear. And for most people, it seems tedious that we have to go through this laborious effort, which we used to do in person by just saying, uh, voice vote. But that vote has been available to every member, and we take it for a reason. In particular, my question, rhetorical as it might be, is if it's true that we should not be making such big decisions via pandemic, why did those who oppose it not vote no upon introduction? Why did they agree to hear this legislation if it was so inappropriate to be heard now? I, I think that at the very lea-, this was a problem with at least one other piece of legislation this year. And if, in fact, this debate is so inappropriate that it shouldn't be held online, then I would think that those people who believe that should not even be voting to introduce. There's nothing wrong with voting not to introduce or voting against introduction. It sends a, a signal loud and clear as surely as the closing comments and debate that each member has made at the end of each ordinance. In the future, I would ask my colleagues with the greatest emphasis to reconsider the taking for granted that we all have been accustomed to of votes to introduce, that it is a tool that might in fact accomplish some of the goals that some of my colleagues have expressed that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Do we have any other council members make a final comment? Okay, before we move on, I, I do. I've heard a lot of things, not only tonight, but for a while. A couple of things, and I've got my notes coming around, so I hope I'm not rambling. But I want us to all understand that we as a city council have a responsibility periodically to review our city boundaries. Now, we don't have a responsibility to annex or to not include certain areas. I just do believe that we have a responsibility periodically to review our city boundaries, and that is what this process is. I am, I don't know. I mean, I, I support the folks that says, you know, we're going to challenge the waivers or we don't have waivers, or we're going to do the remonstrance process. If I were disheartened with the decision and I was out in, in that, in that area to be annexed and I didn't want to be annexed or didn't think I did, I would probably do about the same things. So I don't have a real issue with that. I think the issue is, and particularly with waivers, I also heard someone says, well, does a contract last a lifetime? I'm, I'm not an attorney, but when a contract is made between two entities, until those two break it somehow, I don't see how it becomes ineffective. I don't see how a third party can come in and say that's no longer effective. So that's one of the things that I'm anticipating that'll have to be resolved and probably through litigation. But the validity of the waivers that we talked about. The remonstration process, I mean, it is clear. It tells you the rules. And we'll just, that's again, one of the processes. We'll just have to see how it goes. I do agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith in that, and, and I don't have exact details. We've just been around a little bit, but part of this is a result of some of the past errors, maybe errors in the word I want to use, maybe the past inaction or in some cases, actions of previous city administrations or some other things by the city over time. Today is, this is the culmination of where we are now, I do believe, with part of that process. I hope I didn't misquote my colleague, but that's kind of where we're here today. Also, and if I can piggyback on Councilmember Flaherty, I, I do want to repeat that there's some folks out there that said, you know, that it seems that if we or, or I don't agree with them, then we're not listening. I couldn't disagree with that any, anymore. I, I just could not disagree with that. I listened to a lot of comments tonight on Trustee Barrow. I live in Van Buren Trustee. This has been some time ago, four or five weeks ago, but I specifically made extra time or, or made sure I had enough time so that we could talk about this process. I've done that with several other folks, like many of my council colleagues. I do social stuff. I talk to people. We have, we're not doing this in a vacuum, and I want that to be clear. And because we don't agree, don't mean I'm not listening. Okay, please. Get out and talk to those affected. There is a lot of folks here. I'm an at-large candidate. I share that with two of my other colleagues. If we were to do that within the city boundaries, then just by being at-large a candidate, mean that our area of communication is much broader from some situations like that. It's about the same way with this annexation process. Over time, I have emailed, have phone calls, I've personally talked to people. My colleagues have done the same. So I, you know, I'm just not real happy with hearing that we're not listening just because we may not happen to agree. This has been a very large area in scope with this annexation. I will agree with that. It, but it's still the process. And we've listened. It, it's been a tough call in many of the ordinances that we've talked about, for myself as well. Heard my colleagues say that it's been tough in some cases. But I think the way I voted is, is at least for me, the proper way. Lastly, there's still some things that I have to work out. I mentioned the waivers. I mentioned some re- the remonstrance process. There'll be other conversations. I am too specifically concerned about or with some of our public safety issues, in particularly the BPD staffing issue. Now, this is something we've been talking about for a while, been grappling with, maybe even pre this version of annexation with regard to staffing. So this is critical. Again, another tough spot. I find myself this evening, and I'm going to say this out loud. I think I've said it a couple of weeks ago in comments. I'm going to say it out loud again tonight. I am trusting that our mayor does what he has said that he will do with regard to this annexation. It is also part of us council members' job to, to work with him and try to do some accountability things. But this is from the administration, and I am trusting that our mayor does what he has said he is going to do with regard to annexation. So I'll leave that there for this evening. Do we have any other final comments? Is there any of my colleagues that would care to rebut any of that this evening? Thank you. Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll for ordnet seventeen dash fifteen, Area Five, South Island, Bloomington, annexation?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Allo?
No.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Orness Seventeen fifteen has been adopted, six, three, zero. Before we proceed, and I do believe administration would like to speak briefly before we move to Ordinate Seventeen seventeen. Mr. Rooker?
Thank you, Councilmember Sims, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time or not.
Neither am I, but it's the last one and it's getting late, so.
Sure, Michael Rooker's city attorney, just to remind everybody. I just wanted to mention that in the event that there is in a moment a motion to introduce Ordinance Seventeen dash seventeen, the administration would request that the council vote no on that motion to introduce Ordinance Seventeen dash seventeen. By voting no, the council will end the annexation of Area Seven. As, as has been well documented and has been stated multiple times, including tonight, the administration does not support the annexation of Area Seven, and therefore we would like to express our opposition to any motion to introduce any ordinance to annex Area Seven.
Okay, thank you for that comment. And before we have a motion to introduce, introduce, and Mr. Rooker, you can still stay there, I just want to be clear. By not introducing it, then it will not by the end of the time, the sixty days, and it'll just fall off without any further action. Is that the intent of this action?
That's exactly right. If it's never introduced at a city council meeting after sixty days from the date that the public hearing was closed, the, the annexation of Area Seven will not be possible.
Okay, Councilmember Scambalory.
Yes, could I ask our own attorney, Mr. Lucas, too? Do you concur with that assessment?
I, I do, yes. I think there are two possible actions that the council could take tonight to eliminate Area Seven. This is, this is certainly one of them and probably the more expedient option.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rooker, and thanks for sharing that with us. Okay, we still have more legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance Seventeen dash seventeen be introduced, congrats by the clerk, by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved that Ordinance Seventeen dash seventeen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims.
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Allo?
No.
Bowlin?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
And Scambalory?
No.
Thank you. And that motion to introduce fails zero nine. Okay, thank you. Now we will now move on to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas.
Yes, thank you. Just a, a couple of brief reminders, this Friday, there is a scheduled work session at twelve noon to be held on Zoom. There are two items that I believe will be ready for your preview this Friday. They include a resolution affecting the local income tax distributions that are made to the County Dispatch Center. That's a resolution that comes on the recommendation of the P S Lit Committee and their work over the summer. The other item is a petition for a rezone from Wheeler Missions that will be introduced on October the sixth. So unless there's a motion to, to cancel that work session tonight, we will plan on proceeding with those two items this Friday. And just another reminder that next Wednesday is the scheduled introduction of budget-related legislation as well as the committee discussion of those items of legislation the same night, which will serve as the public hearing on the items that require that. So that's all I've got for tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucas. Before we entertain a motion to cancel work session, will my colleagues please indicate by show of hands those that would in, or are planning to attend noon on Friday's work session? Okay, I see enough, so we'll have the meeting Friday at noon, or the work session, I should call it. Okay, thank you. No, thank you. And that concludes our business for the evening. I shall adjourn this meeting if there are no objections. Saying none, everybody have a great night. Thanks for all your help, Parliamentarian Flaherty, I appreciate it.